Okay, let me get back to full screen here somehow. Welcome, everybody, to our first regular council meeting of 2023. I apologize now if I screw up the date multiple times during the meeting. I think we're all just getting used to it. So we are going to, we are gathered here, obviously, in person at City Hall. We also have our city attorney joining us by Zoom. And the staff either here in council chambers or from their offices by Zoom too. So we're going to go ahead and start off with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please join me. Dear Father, thank you so much for bringing us all together safely tonight, getting us through 2022 and into a great new 2023. Please make sure that you shine out your light brightly on everybody here. Guide us as we make best decisions we can for the citizens here in Liberty Lake and the surrounding areas. Stand by our citizens, stand by our first responders as they do the perilous job that they have to make sure we are all safe. In Jesus' name. Okay, we're going to go ahead and start with call the meeting to order course and start with roll call. Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurt. Mayor Pro Tim Follier.
Your.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Salberg.
Here.
All right, and Councilmember Van Orman is out tonight for family emergency. Do we have a motion to excuse her?
Move to excuse Councilmember Van Orman.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have motion by Councilmember Dunn and a second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor of excusing Councilwoman Van Orman, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, you name is six zero. All right, and we are on to the agenda approval, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have one amendment to to make, and that is item nine A. This evening, we'd like to remove the newsletter workshop and replace it with the advisory boards workshop. And the main reason being is Wendy was the one that was going to head up the discussion on the newsletter.
Yep, and then the replacement is to to appoint our STA voting representative this year. And we actually need to have that information into STA here pretty soon. Didn't want to wait till the next meeting, so.
So I'll make I'll make that a motion to amend.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Salberg. Any questions? Not seeing any. All in favor of amending the agenda, item nine A, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Not hearing any. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Dunn. Any questions? All right, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, not hearing you. Motion carries six zero. All right, we will then move on to citizen comments. So for those of you in the audience tonight, if there's somebody who would like to make a comment, we have our little half sheets on the table. I think they're yellow this week. We've kind of been going back forth between yellow and white. So if you're in the audience here with us, please fill out one of the yellow sheets and get it to Kelsey Hardy at the end of the table here. And she will pass them to me to call on you to speak. It's three minutes on any topic. Just remember, it is truly citizen comments. There will be no no reply from the council, but if there is something we need to get back with you on, we will certainly make sure we have your correct contact information. And for anybody online who'd like to make make a comment, if you could, please just send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting host in chat, and he will get my attention. So nobody in the audience? Nope. Anybody online, Todd? All right, so we don't have anybody with citizen comments at this time. Please note that there will be an opportunity during our resolution and also at the end of the meeting for additional citizen comments. All right, so we will be moving on to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. We have Chief Simmons is up first.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This evening, members of our leadership team would like to recognize several Liberty Lake Police Department officers and support staff for their outstanding level of performance, starting off with the Sergeant's Award presented by Sergeant Mike Boganreath.
Hello. So this year, I had the pleasure of working with Sergeant Isaac to come up with the Sergeant's Award. And we're recognizing one that really deserves this award, but the officers for this city, the way they care about the citizens, you know, it's really hard to choose. But if I could have Officer Alivis come on up here. Officer Alivis represents this department in a positive and professional manner, both on and off duty. She recently made herself available during her days off to assist officers with the only Spanish-speaking suspect. She translated for the officers who were then able to obtain the information necessary to make an arrest. By her being available, the officers were able to handle the call in a timely manner, which allowed them to respond to other calls for service. She has become a certified car seat technician and will be holding classes in the future to ensure that Liberty Lake residents are installing car seats correctly. This in turn will create a safe commute for the children of Liberty Lake and the surrounding area. She has also become the department's background investigator and has begun the backgrounds on the two new hires in the early part of 2023. Officer Alivis has allowed us to adjust her shift to accommodate for the agency's needs, making a safer work environment for shift partners. She is a team player who always puts the needs of the department over hers. I am proud to present the 2022 Sergeant's Award to Master Police Officer Stephen Morton.
Next, the Lieutenant's Award presented by Lieutenant Darren Morton.
Mayor, members of council, I appreciate being here tonight. Lieutenant's Award is one that I had to put a lot of thought and consideration in, especially as it's the first one for the city of Liberty Lake. Now, I feel that every officer in the staff and the department deserves an award for the way they conduct themselves on a daily basis. Each one represents a department and all of our core values and makes the organization what it is today. There are several responsibilities that get distributed throughout the department to make sure everything functions and the organization remains running smoothly. If I could have MPO Arnold, please step forward. MPO Arnold took on a number of those responsibilities over this past year. He took the role of department armor, completing the Glock armor course and continued to add to that responsibility by becoming a pistol instructor for our department. MPO Arnold continued to become a primary weapons instructor for all of our weapon systems. And he completely revised our current inventory by verifying and inspecting each weapon for within the department. He revised our qualification standards and made them more relevant to meet the current standards in law enforcement qualifications. He became the lead instructor for the entire department and all weapons platforms. MPO Arnold was also instrumental in ensuring our compliance with the Leosol weapons and property secured through the government surplus system. He ensured we passed onsite inspection and provided all the documentation necessary to ensure that we can keep up on that property. MPO Arnold also took an active role as the FTO coordinator during a time when a position was left vacant. He ensured that each of our newly assigned officers made it through the field training program and became welcome additions to the team. MPO Arnold, in addition, was selected to work in the County Air Unit as crew chief for the Spokane County multi-jurisdictional team. MPO Arnold is also willing to take on more responsibilities at all times and ensures each one is done with pride and professionalism. So this year's lieutenant award goes to MPO Derek Arnold.
Our final award presented tonight will be our Officer of the Year Award, Officer Jordan Sewell. The profession of law enforcement has changed dramatically over the past couple of years. The day-to-day challenges officers face has increased exponentially, and stepping up to meet those challenges is extremely difficult. Observing even the most seasoned officer about these challenges is impressive, but to see a young officer like Officer Sewell receiving this award, not only meet these challenges head-on, is remarkable, but to see him do so so effectively and with confidence is magnificent. The young officer I referenced again is Officer Jordan Sewell. Officer Sewell's commitment to public safety in our community and our agency is reflective in his exemplary work ethic and attitude. He's a great example of the fact that leadership is not based on stripes, bars, leaves, or stars. He is truly an instrumental part of our agency and helps us fulfill our vision and our mission. Thank you, Officer Sewell, for all that you do. This community appreciates you. We appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
May I pay though? All right, well, it seems to be all about first responders tonight. Next on our agenda is the proclamation for Community Risk Reduction Week, something we do every year. I know Chief Asmus was going to be here to receive it. He's stuck in the airport in Seattle, so we have Deputy Chief here with us tonight. And we will go ahead and have Kelsey read the proclamation. Before I finish it off, we'll do a vote to support it. And then we'll make the presentation. Kelsey.
This is the proclamation of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington for Community Risk Reduction Week. Whereas the City of Liberty Lake, Washington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Liberty Lake. And whereas every 23 seconds, a fire department in the United States responds to a fire somewhere in the nation. And whereas fires nationally were responsible for 3,800 civilian deaths and 75% of these fatalities in 2021 occurred in the home. And whereas fires nationally were responsible for 14,700 civilian injuries and 76% of these injuries in 2021 were also related to fires in the home. And whereas an estimated $15.9 billion in property damage nationally occurred as a result of fire in 2021. And whereas Wildland Urban Interface, WUI, related fires remain a concern nationwide with multi-billion dollar losses as a result in 2021. And whereas the fire service responds to a growing number of medical calls for service surpassing 80% of total call volume in some jurisdictions. And whereas community risk reduction is a data-informed process to identify and prioritize local risks, followed by integrated and strategic investment of resources to reduce their occurrence and impact. And whereas the value of community support from local, state, and national partners to address community risks is recognized to meet the demands on paid combination and volunteer members of the fire service. And whereas the global, excuse me, the goal of community risk reduction is to reduce the occurrence and impact of emergency events for both community members and emergency responders through deliberate action in the areas of the five E's of education, engineering, enforcement, emergency response, and economic incentive. And whereas most fire-related and many medical calls for service are preventable with the five E's performed as part of an integrated community risk reduction program. And whereas Monday, January 16, 2023, is Martin Luther King Day and is nationally recognized as a national day of service and an opportunity for communities to reduce the risk in their community through a series of educational and other programs.
All right, before we go on, we'll go ahead and I'll take a motion from the council to support this proclamation. Do we have a motion?
Move to support the proclamation as read.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Dunn. Do we have a second? Again, we have a second from Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of supporting our proclamation for Community Risk Reduction Week, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Therefore, be it resolved that the week of January 16 through 22, 2023, be designated as CRR Week, a grassroots initiative of fire service professionals across the nation to raise awareness of the importance of CRR in the fire service community and an opportunity to make communities safer throughout this city. And I urge all the people of Liberty Lake to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Spokane Valley Fire Department serving the residents of Liberty Lake dated this third day, January 2023. All right, so we'll go ahead and get a signature and do a do the presentation. Are you guys gonna, at least all three, come on up. Let me sign this real quick for you. All right. Do you want to move the council here?
If we could, that'd be great.
You guys come around. Having the water bottles get knocked over this time. Okay, we lost one of our members, but we can go ahead and get set up for our next presentation. Did I drop a pen? Sorry for that. So next up, we have a presentation from Phil Champlin of the Hub Sports Center. An update on the expansion project and future ask of the council. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here and mayor and council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share some some plans that we have. And so I've prepared a little PowerPoint presentation just to kind of give you some visuals to go with it, but we're calling this Fields for Our Future and a Pitch for More Play. So Kelsey, go ahead and move to the next one there, or whoever Todd's in charge. So our goal with Hub Sports Center is really to empower our youth and inspire our community. And we do that through our current facility right now, which is 66,000 square feet. We serve about 170,000 youth and families through there annually. Go into the next slide, please. Our purpose is to provide events that have a positive impact on youth and community, and we do that through joining the communities of faith, sports, education, business, and government to positively impact our youth and region through events and programs that enhance life skills. Next slide. So intrinsically, we all know the the value of play and participation and being active. And the Aspen Institute in Colorado has come up with this graphic that really just kind of does a great job of accentuating what some of those benefits are for physically active kids that really lead into being physically active adults. But but you can see on this graphic, 40% higher test scores, less smoking drug use, lower levels of depression, self-degradation, 15% more likely to attend college, higher self-esteem, all great pieces that come from being active and participating in in activities such as sports. And especially coming out of this pandemic, we need opportunities like this more than ever for our youth. Next slide, please. So we were fortunate to have a donor come alongside us. And over the course of 2022, we were able to purchase 17 and a half acres that are directly adjacent from our current property. And so that's the the graphic on the left with the four fields, or excuse me, on the right, with the four fields is that 17 and a half acres. And so we're in the process of coming up with a with a plan of what to do with that land. And so what I'm sharing with you now is a draft of some of the concepts that we've gone out and commissioned a couple of studies. We're talking to potential user groups and trying to figure out what's the best use for that property and that land. How can we maximize its use? And part of the feedback that's coming back right now is multi-use fields. And so you can see, I'll differentiate between rectangle and triangle fields. So triangle fields are typically going to be your baseball and softball groups, which are wonderful sports and have a lot of participation in them. But you're really limited to baseball and softball on those fields. Whereas rectangle fields are a little bit more multi-use, so soccer, lacrosse, football, rugby, ultimate frisbee. We can even do some T-ball out there on those fields. And so it really lends itself to being able to operate 12 months a year and provide opportunities for youth to play. Right now, in the greater Spokane County area, there are two synthetic turf fields that are available for public use, and that's out at Dwight Merkel. So right now, we're really behind the curve as a community in having these types of accessible fields. The benefits of synthetic turf is that we can use them 12 months a year. The other part of this would be to light those fields as well. As we know, this time of year, nobody will be able to be on there after four o'clock if we didn't have lights on there. And the wonders of technology allows us to have directional LED lights. So if any of you have seen the stadium lights at the football stadium at Ridgeline, they are very directional, and you can walk 10 feet off that property line and be in the dark. And so this will be less intrusive than what we all grew up with when we knew when the football game was happening in town because the entire town lit up, right? So being good neighbors to our to our people, to the to the north and to the east of our property as well. The we'd have one natural grass field to have some some points of differentiation there to have space that we're going to set up tents or canopies or anything like that. We can do that on that type of space. All the way to the left would be some pickleball courts. As you well know, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport right now, and we host 14 courts inside the hub that that we'll see 300 to 400 players a week come through there just to play pickleball. And so an outdoor space and talking to them is still something that they want, even though the city does have courts over at Orchard Park. This would, this would be an additional to that and would also allow us to to share resources with potential tournaments that that we could have in both locations if you're very close together. The in between those four synthetic turf fields, the very middle of that would be a playground space. And I talked with the Spokane Parks Foundation about inclusive playgrounds versus accessible playgrounds. And I didn't know the difference between the two. And so I wanted accessible equipment so kids with disabilities could come and play. And they educated me that an inclusive playground is really what I'm looking for, and that's really where kids with disabilities and without disabilities can play in the same space. And so downtown Spokane, a riverfront park where the old YMCA used to be, they're the Providence playscape. And that's that type of park. It's similar to the Discovery Playground that's that's at Mirabou in Spokane Valley. But by providing an inclusive playground here, what I originally thought is just an extra space for siblings to play while their siblings are out on the fields doing their thing, this could really become an intentional space that that people are coming to to utilize directly. And it'd be a great bookend from what we have in the city of Spokane to having here in the city of Liberty Lake for families with kids with disabilities to have a place to come and play. The dark building just to the left of that would be where we'd have our restrooms and concessions, but also be a team center and a community room. So this property is adjacent to Selkirk Middle School. And so this would be a great opportunity to have direct access for those kids to come after school and have a safe place to hang out and play. And so those are, well, and the last would be a walking trail that would go throughout the property. So as parents are there and their kids are out there playing, it gives them a space to walk around. Maybe we can add some sort of follow heroes circuit course type apparatus out there as well. But again, in our original conversations and where we're at, this is the concept that that we're starting to move forward with. What it would do would be to allow us to expand our capacity to serve the community. Right now, we utilize the hub in that in that same manner where we're a hybrid. We're doing events in with and for the community, but we're also doing economic development and bringing in major events and tournaments that bring people in from out of town that that spend money here in Liberty Lake through restaurants and hotels and retail and shopping. And so it would expand that side of it as well with economic development. The hub right now generates $6 to $7 million in economic impact through our activities. I would expect when this is fully operational, we'll double that to 12 to 14 million a year in economic impact. And we'll be able to serve another 150,000 to 170,000 kids and families through this outdoor space. Next slide, please. So groups that we've reached out to and had conversations with about this is we covered a lot of our soccer, lacrosse, rugby, football, some multi-sport organizations. They are all excited about this opportunity and we're ready to sign rental agreements with me, even though I haven't turned any dirt yet out there. The the need is great. And and in talking to these groups, they are lacking the ability to grow and serve more kids because there's not enough field space out there for them to utilize. And if you want to touch my heart, then tell me the kids aren't able to play because there's not enough space out there. And so it really galvanized our board and myself to to continue to really pursue this project. We've had conversations with our local school districts, Sports Commission, the county, Chambers of Commerce, GSI, Visit Spokane. They're all in support of this project as well. We'd love to add the city of Liberty Lake to that list. We're also pursuing the city of Spokane Valley as well as, as you know, our border is is right there. Next slide, please. So this project, we spent $3 million and purchased the property in February of '22. So we own the land now. We're looking at our pre-development piece of the project to be about $500,000. $22 million for the construction for that draft design that I showed you. That includes a 45% escalation contingency fee in there as well. I would much rather come and ask and we'll tell you this 22 million and get it done for for 17 or 18 million than than to than to reverse that. So so we put a pretty aggressive contingency piece in there. Our goal is to be getting it done for less than that. And then we'll need to to supply all the equipment for those fields and activities and sports that we're going to do. And so that's that part of it. We've been committed $990,000 from Spokane County from one of their ARP buckets. And so that's committed to this project. We've been approved for a Recreation Conservation Office grant which maxes at $350,000. That's to be approved in this next legislative session. We're number 20 on the project list of 38 projects. And from what I understand, we're in that funding zone for that project. And then we have an ask from the state capital budget going out for $1 million on both the House and the Senate side, taken on by our our fourth district representatives for that. Next slide, please. So lastly, what I'd like to ask for consideration from from council is is in talking with with Katie Allen before she left and Kyle Dixon. The city has a tourism promotion capital fund, which is geared for projects like this. And so we'd like to request $250,000 out of that fund towards this project. Our timeline right now is in 2023, we're going to be out doing our fundraising piece. And that'll be both public and private fundraising. And I've shared with you a little bit about where we're at on the public side. One of the things that I'd love to to have again from the city would be some sort of commitment. I don't know how that looks or how that needs to look. But but to leverage that that the city that that our organization resides in is supporting us financially. And and take that to the state capital budget group and say, hey, look, we've already got this commitment from Spokane County. We have this commitment from the city of Liberty Lake, as well as we're out talking to other jurisdictions. It just, it goes a long way to to say that the the place that you reside, your home, is supporting you in some some capacity with this. So I know that that fund has gone, I believe Kyle told me last, was a little over $300,000. So we're not looking to Um so we're not looking to deplete that fund, and we really most likely would not be drawing that down until twenty twenty-four. Um that's when my goal would be to to start um construction with that project. Um again, if the miracle happens and in twenty twenty-three we get some uh crazy funding set up, then I'll I'll start. I'll start as soon as we have the funds available to to start moving on this. Uh the user groups have ensured me that that those four fields will be full pretty quickly um after they are ready to go. And uh again, that that's kind of the the presentation. I'm I'm happy to answer any any questions for you. Yeah, thank you.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. Good to see you, Phil. Um a couple of questions for you uh in some of the conversations that you and I have had. Um is is it a possibility? Or are you guys considering trying to sell naming rights?
Yeah.
For this facility? And do you have a ballpark on how much money you think you might be able to get from that?
We're working through that right now. Um one of the groups that that we're talking with is uh Spokane Indians. Um who do that that type of thing. Um and so trying to get a a reasonable ballpark number instead of going out and saying, hey, it's a. A million dollars for the naming rights and and you get crickets. Um but to find out what that is and and what kind of timeframe and and um STCU was just a presenting sponsor with a podium. And and so we have some um recent comparables that we can go out and do. But but yes, on the complex as the whole, on individual fields, um on different pieces of that, the the pickleball courts could be a standalone. The inclusive playground could be a standalone, but absolutely we'll be looking at those opportunities.
Okay. Uh and then my follow-up question was, can you? Let's say you don't get the full twenty-two million that you need. Can you build in sections? Are you planning to build in sections and say, okay, let's do half of it first and then the other half later?
Yeah, so uh Todd, if you want to go back to the third or fourth slide, it's got the map of the uh of the proposed complex. Uh so really, what we need to get started or what I would propose to get started would be to have at least two synthetic turf fields. Um the additional parking and restrooms are really the core pieces of it. And then to uh again, we'll know more as we get farther into this year where we're at fundraising wise. But to to take aspects of this and take, we'll just say again, the pickleball complex. And go to the pickleball community and say, hey, if you'd like this to move forward into phase one, then we need you to help us fund this much for that. And inclusive playground and and there's some grants and some opportunities for that particular piece as well. Can we get people to get behind that side of it and move that in? But but the the bare bones of what we would need would be two synthetic turf fields, um restrooms and parking. Um so that would be the the bare bones phase one of the project.
Any other questions or comments?
Hey, I would just echo your perceptions, Phil, from the user groups perspective. Um from my experience in youth sports spring and specifically lacrosse. Uh I just say that the availability of um multi-sport field, I mean, has always been a crisis and it's only getting harder. Our ability to play and actually schedule sport um is compromised um between a very difficult plant, very scheduling to inability to use the. Um or polo field. Um options like this are really an important action to really, I mean, allow and enable uh youth sports. So, thanks.
No, thank you. And and that's a lot of the feedback that we're hearing from multiple groups. And and again, the synthetic turf fields. Allow for multiple use multiple times a year, whereas if you're using a grass field, there there is definitely a rest period. That you need to have on that grass, so it it doesn't deteriorate. And and also, you have to look at the wear patterns. Uh for grass. And so you have to be able to move things around and 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 put it in different spots. You're not always having the goal in the same spot. So. Again, synthetic turf makes a lot of sense for our our community and the amount of use that we plan to have here um for this.
Just uh oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh just a quick question. Uh what kind of a timeframe are you looking for a response from the council?
I would say the sooner the better, um in the sense with the the. Part with the state legislator and the and the capital budget. And so I know Representative Christian is uh making that request on the House side. And Senator Patton, we're making that request on the Senate side. Uh and so the sooner that we can have other jurisdictions join in to say, hey, we're in for X. It's just going to make that case stronger um in Olympia and and make that pathway a little bit simpler. Um I am reaching out to the the was it the third, the sixth, and the seventh districts as well? And and talking with their representatives to to make this a a community ask. Because this this project won't be Liberty Lake centric in the sense of only Liberty Lake residents will benefit from it. Um this will be a community-wide uh resource. And and so uh those districts will will have some benefit from it as well.
Follow-up if I can. So I'm assuming your intention would be to continue with the project regardless of what legislate comes out of legislature.
Yes. I mean, our our goal is to make this happen.
Right.
Um and uh but uh as you know, and and as we can build a bigger coalition. Um that snowball gets bigger.
Right.
And it just it helps us um not only with with public dollars, but with private dollars as well.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh Councilmember Solberg.
Yeah, Mayor, maybe could you or Kyle uh fill us in as to how we replenish that that fund? Um I I'm totally in favor of, I think it's very reasonable that we would go two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. And maybe in increments if we need to, but uh how would we?
Well, so so I'll start off and then and then I'll I'll let Kyle jump in. So um the twenty twenty-three um budget had us ending twenty twenty-two. With approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that fund and an estimate of ending fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-three of three hundred and thirty-six thousand. So there actually is some room in there. And Kyle, um I obviously know the answer, but it's better coming from you on how that gets funded. It's part of the taxes from the hotels. But you've got the figures.
Correct. Yeah, so that's an additional lodging tax of one point three percent that is specifically geared towards. You know, acquisition or construction of tourism-related facilities. So that fund was created in twenty sixteen. We have not had an ask of those funds yet. And so what you see, so we have today three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that fund. We anticipate end of year conservatively, you know, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so um you you can see, you know, how it's, you know, roughly sixty thousand a year, fifty thousand a year that that get replenished.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Well, Councilmember Solberg asked my question, so uh that that was perfect. Um I guess my question would be. Can we instruct um C staff to bring it back at the next council meeting for a vote? Do we need to make the vote tonight's? What uh what is?
It's a major expenditure. I would suggest putting it on the um as an action item at the next.
On the seventeenth.
Meeting on the seventeenth, so it's a little like a motion to bring it back for the council as an action item.
I will make that motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cargill to bring um bring back the request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the hub. At the next meeting with a second by Councilmember Dunn. Any other discussion before we get a vote on that? Councilmember Spencer.
Um I'll just say, I I uh am strongly in favor of this. I I think uh an organization like this that is in our community that can actually show an economic impact. Uh for the benefit of our city and and we can reciprocate that. I I am strongly in favor.
Uh Councilmember Kurt, you haven't had a chance to me.
Uh the only comment that I wanted to say, I think, was um while I was looking at the the vision that you have here in the picture. Um just in some of the other things we have going on in the community, my first thought was, man, it feels like everything's really coming together. Um and so I'm excited to bring this back. Um and I'm excited to hear what your plan is.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Solberg.
Just for uh when the staff makes a presentation, could it also include uh taking a look at? Um somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Or equal amounts in twenty twenty-three and in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, we. How can bring back a couple of different scenarios?
Okay.
And then at some point, though, we need to be a budget amendment because nothing's allocated for it. All right, so.
I just have one other question, probably for Kyle. I know we we talked uh a few months ago about the fund that is passes through. Straight through to um Visit Spokane. Is is was was that something that we just renewed for the the year twenty twenty-three?
So, yeah, so those are marketing dollars, and that's a pure pass-through to Visit Spokane. This is just a separate bucket. Uh for tourism, I guess, related. Facilities, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to whether, so right now, we're we're not doing anything as far as administrating those funds. Um so Visit Spokane is kind of handling that. Uh so I'm just curious as to whether there would be a way to. Bring in some of those funds for perhaps marketing this facility. I don't know.
Yeah, that's something we need to look into a little bit more. That would definitely wouldn't come out of the capital fund, but we can explore that.
And if I may, the the city also manages a lodging tax fund, which is set up for marketing. Um and it's very similar to what what you pass through to Visit Spokane. And so the hub as an entity that's a nonprofit that that puts on those types of tourism-related events. We apply for those funds to market our current operations. And so we can we can grab some marketing dollars through that. And then as this comes online, our our ask could probably increase, just as we'd have increased assets that to market at that point. So and and as I mentioned before, Visit Spokane is one of the supporters of this project. Uh and so we can work with them as well and and your staff too on promoting this as part of their um promotions of of Spokane. And specifically Liberty Lake.
Right.
I know we just allocated those tourism funds at the last meeting. I forgot what you got. Was it fifteen?
Uh I think so.
Yeah.
Ten or fifteen.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That was a year ago.
Right, totally last year.
Far back. All right, uh there's no further comments. I'll go ahead and take a vote on bringing this back as an action item. All in favor. Uh bringing this back as an action item to fund um help fund the hub expansion, please say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Congratulations. We'll have it back on the agenda.
Thank you all very much. If you guys have questions in the meantime, you know where to find me.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Presentation number four, welcome, Dave Nordman. So um Dave reached out to me. Um he's with Assurance Wireless. Um it was really good timing as we talk about how to get information out to our citizens on utility tax rebates. Um property tax rebates, other other things that can help our citizens who might be struggling. Um the company Dave's Dave's working with with regards to um. Access to really to cell phones and broadband. I'll obviously let him uh do the presentation, but I this is really an exciting opportunity. That we I think we can learn from with regards to rebates and then getting the information out to the rest of our residents and beyond. And we've got an electronic copy too, if you guys want it. Thanks, Dave.
To tell you, my hat's off to the first responders of this town. Uh yeah, my name's Dave Nordman. I am the regional director for a company called SDI Marketing. We are the national provider for Assurance Wireless. We administer the Lifeline program. You guys have probably all heard about the Lifeline program. Well, in uh we are launching it nationwide. I took over the project in Spokane County uh because I live in Liberty Lake. This is a very big passion of mine. In fact, I set aside my ideal job to take this one. Uh and what we are trying to do is get awareness out there. What it is is it's a very simple qualifying plan that we offer a free cell phone through the T-Mobile network, five G. They get unlimited talk, text data and ten gigabytes of hotspot for free. And by the way, it's the phone we give away is nicer than I what I currently have. So uh what I wanted to do, I wanted to give you guys this presentation. Uh my presentation is not very big. Go ahead and go to the next one. So as I said, they get monthly data, unlimited talk, text, and it's free. And uh just to give you an idea who qualifies, go ahead and go to the next slide if you would. Just to pass out. So what they can, you buy that one. Let's go to the one that qualifies. I thought I hid those from you. Anyway, I'll just get by that. So if if like in Liberty Lake here, if they qualify for free or reduced lunches. They automatically qualify for a free cell phone. Now, one of the big advantages of Assurance Wireless, let's say one of the parents or the partners has a cell phone currently. And they are on the reduced lunch. They're on snack. Um if they're a college student that has a pellegram, they qualify for another free phone that they can hand out to one of their children. I have a neighbor that we just did this with because she couldn't afford a phone for her son that stays at home. He has disability. Now he has a phone. He can use the hotspot to hook up to his tablet. Keep in mind, it will not run an Xbox three sixty. He tried that on us. Uh and the only requirement is they have to use it once a month to keep it active. Who doesn't use their cell phone once a month? And what we're trying to come up with is a plan, uh because it's so new, we we're currently doing business with WorkStar Spokane. Uh Meals on Wheels. Uh we are going to be part of the uh. District chat group on Facebook and everything else. And what we're trying to figure out in Liberty Lake here is a place that if we say we will be here. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from two to five, we need a place for the parents to come in. Qualify, by the way, the qualification takes less than five minutes. And then five more minutes to activate the phone. The one difference between us and doing it online, they walk out with an active phone. Yeah, so we're just looking for a place where we can do it in the library, uh schedule it someplace. Um you know, if if we even pass out five-dollar McDonald's gift cards so they can take the kids to McDonald's after they're done. So that's my presentation. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I think this is a great opportunity, especially for our students who struggle, especially you know, coming out of COVID. You know, and people were struggling to get internet. And we've got obviously this big broadband issue across the US and having access. Um I I think this could be a huge benefit to to some of our residents.
Yeah, to be honest with you, the I I was testing it today. The uh hotspot on my cell phone is faster than my X fifty. Internet.
So we'd be looking for obviously ideas from the council and other ways to get the word out. So um we can just. Inform people, Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. A question. Um on the last page here, it says this new benefit will help eligible households connect to jobs, critical healthcare services. And virtual classrooms. Are there any requirements of that? Or I I I thought I heard you said the brief space, the only requirement is that you use it once a month.
Yeah, all they have to do is make one phone call a month, send one text, log on to their hotspot. That's all they have to do once a month.
But there's no requirements to do those things that are listed here.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is this is a federal program, you said.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my question. Nothing's free. Who's paying for this?
Well, eventually we all are, right? Yeah. But this program has been out since two thousand and eight during the Obama administration. And it was hit and miss. Like, if you go to Assurance Wireless and look at the comments. I have I was approved for my phone two weeks ago. It hasn't arrived. Or I cracked my phone. I've been waiting six weeks for a replacement. We can get them a replacement within forty-eight hours. And we are local. If they have a problem, they call us up. We take care of this for them. They don't have to go into a retail store and get hassled or anything else. Because, hey, you got a free phone. You know, I was in the cellular industry for twenty years. I know exactly how this works. And uh it's like I said, it's a very, it's a it's a passion of mine because once in my life, as I told her, I get to do something to help the community. Normally, I worked for two people, my boss and myself. And yes, we do get paid to do it, but we got to sell a heck of a lot of phones to make money on it. But it's just my company just decided, hey, we're going to do this because it's the right thing to do, especially coming out of COVID.
Any other questions? I know one of the things that Mark and I are are kind of have on our to-do list the first quarter is to revamp part of our city website. For community um. Community connections. Um we need to come up with a policy kind of around that. But I see this, something like this could definitely fit into that page where we're trying to connect um the community with different resources.
Yeah, and the other thing too is like you were talking about how we we can uh encourage them to seek extra benefits. You know, we we can say, hey, are you getting this? You know, a lot of the students that are getting Pella Grants or uh like Gonzaga, we talked to them. We're going to set up shop there because amazing the number of college students that are on Medicaid. They automatically qualify to get a free phone. Now you do get some of them going, ooh, do I get an iPhone? No, they're all Android phones, so. Yeah.
Well, and our seniors as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's where Meals on Wheels this week. Uh we did uh. One in four hours, we did thirty-six phones with just the one stop with Meals on Wheels. Because you know, you can't get a job if you don't have a phone anymore, right? And uh that's um and the school districts are all lining up, so it's um. We're really looking forward to it. Thank you for your guys' time. And again, don't let me follow these guys.
Well, I want to make sure that you, maybe you and Phil exchange information as well, because he probably has some resources to get with. Thanks for coming, Dave. Appreciate it. Okay, all right, moving on. Reports and inquiries. Uh we are up to city council reports. Would anybody like to chime in? Councilmember Solberg.
Anybody that uh is online or around or all of the people that are in here, we're taking winner glow down now. So if you've got some extra time, you want to come help, we can use it.
Starting tomorrow or Thursday.
Sunday. Sunday.
Oh, it did.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it.
We, we're doing stuff today. No, it's just officially the most work we'll be doing, we hope is Wednesday through Friday.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Alright, well, that was quick. Alright, mayor's report. So I sent everybody out, um, not too long ago, um, the January third mayor's report, um, just of note, just going forward um, of some things that are coming up. Again, this, you know, with the legislative session, there's a lot of things going on with that. Um, plus we also have some upcoming employee training. First on sexual harassment in the workplace, something that's going to be required of everybody. Um, and then, and the, and the, um, more of a communications workshop for some of our employees. And then depending on how the first round goes, we will open up to other employees. But we do have, um, the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce and Greater Spokane Olympia Fly-in at the end of this month. Mark and I will be going over. Um, then a couple of weeks later is the AWC City Action Days in Olympia. And then in March, um, is the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference. And in between there, uh, obviously there's some other trainings and other legislative updates that will be coming from the Valley Chamber through AWC and through GSI. So if you guys want to stay up to date any for, any more than we give you here, an email, feel free to sign up for those update phone calls, um. They get a little redundant at times, um, but it's interesting to hear different different agencies' perspectives on the same thing. Uh, so I think we've gotten out to you the, the legislative priorities for each of the groups. Uh, and we'll be reporting back on, on the bills that, um, they are watching and also the ones that will be affecting us here in the city. So I think that's it for me for today. Uh, city administrator report, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of council and, and audience members, those are who are here and watching online. A couple of quick reminders about events and other things, uh, the community gardens reservations. This is a popular annual thing that the uh, city does. And the reason I mentioned it tonight is number one, it started today. Um, but even though we're only in the second week of winter, this is kind of one of those things that peaks through and remind us that spring is coming. And so, um, of the thirty-eight beds, we reserved almost half of those today. So there are about twenty left. Uh, so if you know of anyone or you yourselves want to reserve a bed, come on up to city hall and, and we can take care of you. Um, the mayor mentioned the legislative session. Uh, it starts next Monday on the ninth officially. Um, and this one is one of the hundred and five day sessions. And so, uh, she also mentioned the Olympia Fly-in will be doing that later this month. And we'll be bringing reports back obviously from that and watching all of the bills that are filed. Uh, especially those that are related to one of these legislative agendas that, that we're supporting. Uh, and then the third item on this list is the Martin Luther King Holiday, which is coming up on Monday, January sixteenth. Uh, that's the date that the city will be observing that and both city hall and the library will be closed. Uh, any questions about those before we move on to the other items? Alright, moving on. So we've got a quick update. Uh, this item came up last, uh, council meeting, uh, on the twentieth. Uh, when you voted to, uh, adopt this into the personnel manual, but I wanted Kyle just to provide another quick update. And particularly, uh, in the context of how it affects you and, and your payroll. So Kyle, take it away.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, so yeah, mayor council, just a quick update, um, reflecting what you as a council body will see going forward. So January was the start of our implementation of semi-monthly payroll. And so obviously transitioning from monthly. And so our new pay periods are gonna run from the first through the fifteenth and the sixteenth through the last day of the month. Pay dates you will see will be the tenth and the twenty-fifth of every month. So council's new salary was seven eighty, seven fifty as adopted in the twenty twenty-three budget. You'll see half of that on the tenth, half of that on the twenty-fifth. And that's what to expect going forward. And obviously staff has adopted that as well. And so we've gone through that with that.
Any questions? Thanks, Kyle.
Alright, moving on, we've got a quick update that, uh, David Williams is going to provide you regarding the uh, Public Works Yard and, uh, the Trailhead Clubhouse. David?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mark, and good evening, mayor, city council members and citizens of Liberty Lake. So I'm gonna give you a quick update on two projects, the Trailhead Project and then also the Liberty Lake Public Works Yard. Uh, we have a lot of people from Legacy Ridge asking some questions about what's going on down there at the Public Works Yard construction site. No, this is not a temporary site. This is what we've been using uh, for our streets team to, uh, you know, hold our equipment and also just to congregate, make sure that we've got a, a place for our team to, uh, go to, uh, when we're taking care of our streets. Well, anyway, the Public Works Yard right now, uh, we're in the process of getting approved. Uh, we just had a change order that was approved, uh, for fire sprinklers and working with fire district on semittals. So there was initially, we were gonna use a firewall. We actually changed that up to use fire sprinklers instead. So certain equipment, pipes, sprinklers, equipment, um, are all being, uh, corrected and submitted through the Spokane Valley Fire District right now. So we want to buy by their code and we're kind of put, going through the process right now of semittals. Okay, next, uh, next slide, please. And the Trailhead Golf Course, um, it actually is coming to fruition right now. You can see a lot of things happening when you drive along Country Vista, uh, you can see the walls are going up, uh, the roof, uh, and all of its supports will be coming out, going up very soon. Uh, construction of the building is moving forward and quickly the roof panels will be set, uh, next week and the wall framing, uh, will be set shortly thereafter. Uh, the building is taking shape and will begin to resemble a functional building very soon. So when you drive by, you'll actually be able to recognize a whole lot is happening over there on that site. It's pretty exciting. Uh, next slide, please. And just please remember that we're doing our Stormwater Master Plan and that a representative from parametrics will be driving through different neighborhoods and will just be collecting information about swells and drainage, uh, inlets around the neighborhoods in Liberty Lake. And next slide, please. If you have any questions, email me directly or you can call me directly as well. If anybody has any questions, I'm always open. Thank you all.
Anybody, Mayor Protam's got a question for you, David.
Go, go for it.
Thank you. Um, your comment about fire sprinklers over, uh, firewall. I'm, I'm fairly certain there's a substantial price difference there. How is that affecting your budget?
Uh, I believe that we actually are, we're good with our budget, but the other thing too is that the, um, I want to say that the change order was necessary because there were things that were required by Spokane Valley. So we want to make sure we follow through on that. But we, we should be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Thank you for asking. It's a good, that's a great question too, Mayor Protam.
Looks like that's it. Thanks, David. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have, have a great night.
Alright, these next two items are scheduling discussions. So, um, as you recall, on the December twentieth council meeting, we had the, uh, presentation regarding the, uh, community engagement platform. We, uh, there was a consensus to bring Zen City back and do a demonstration of that project for, product for the full council. And so we wanted to get your, uh, input tonight, uh, on, on date and, uh, time options. And so initially I will tell you that we have thought about possibly using, uh, January twenty-fourth uh, for that purpose. Uh, January is one of the four months in twenty twenty-three where we have that three-week break between the council meetings. And so that is, is an obvious opportunity to, to do something like this if council is so inclined. And so I'll just open the floor for any input regarding a possible date for this Zen City demonstration.
So we're looking at possibly the twenty-fourth. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, and, and around an hour.
Yes, no more than an hour. Yes.
Sounds great. Question.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do this as like a, um, a, um, workshop, workshop in, uh, one of the regularly scheduled meetings?
We could do that, uh, obviously. Uh, if you, I, I assume everybody has one of the matrix. Um, January seventeenth is, is full. And so we could try to squeeze it in uh, on the seventeenth during the seven PM hour if we chose to do that, or, or accelerate it to six and move some of these others to seven. There's no reason why we can't, or you can't.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't do February seventh?
None other than that pushes us deeper into the calendar. But no, there's no reason why you couldn't do that.
Well, let, let's, um, we can tackle the dates a little bit more when we get to the matrix at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions about? So we're looking at a format, basically what Mark, we, we're talking about thirty-minute presentation and then half an hour.
Essentially a thirty to forty-minute presentation so that the vendor can walk you through the capabilities of the system. Uh, leaving anywhere from thirty, twenty to thirty minutes for you to ask questions and uh, ask them to dive deeper into certain aspects or another.
Alright.
Alright, this next item is similar, uh, although a different topic, the strategic planning session. Uh, the current strategic plan was adopted in, I, I think December of twenty eighteen. Um, so we're, we're coming up on the fifth anniversary and that really is uh, the time in which you want to take a look at revising a strategic plan. And so what we would propose to do is to, uh, target uh, a half-day meeting possibly on a Saturday, uh, I'm going to propose one of the Saturdays in March, which gets you past the February uh, early release for Central Valley School District and before spring break. So we can have that discussion and then, uh, following that discussion where you set mission vision, talk about strategic priorities. Um, assuming we get through that whole conversation in a four-hour period, uh, an opportunity to go to the public and get public engagement and feedback. Um, and the reason this becomes important is because as we get deeper into the year and start talking about budget, that's the opportunity to tie budget to strategic priorities. And as, as odd as it, it sounds to say, because we just adopted the budget, we're, we're already talking about the next budget cycle. And so we want to make sure that we're ordering these things with enough time to be able to do them all effectively.
Yeah, and we haven't had a retreat since I think the Trailhead Retreat. Couple Aprils ago now, however long it's been. So we really are due for one. Um, the, the question is trying to find that, that sweet spot for everybody to be able to make it, but, um, you know, we, we've got a great strategic plan. It's time that we put some measurable, um, e- expectations on it. So we can actually see how we're progressing toward the strategic plan. That's not what we did the first time. So we're growing up, right? And we need to have the strategic plan grow up with us. And that would be, that's a big part of the intent is to make sure we have some, some things that we can measure and, um, put some goals together. Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I, that, that sounds great to me. I would just ask if we're gonna do it in March to do it, uh, either the fourth or the eleventh. Because, um, basketball starts. And I don't want to miss his eggs game. So, uh, I, I prefer not to do the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, if at all possible.
March sixteenth is when I start.
Okay, we, we, we can keep that in mind.
Does it start the sixteenth? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, just looking.
Yeah.
So the fourth or the eleventh?
Fourth or the eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah, let's look at that. Maybe we can put a, put a doodle poll out to everybody for those dates and either AM or PM on those dates.
We'll, we'll get a doodle poll created and sent out to everybody hopefully tomorrow. So you can provide some more input on that. Uh, mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay. Alright. So next we have Spokane Valley Fire Department. Um, I don't, I don't believe we have any slides, but if you just want to give us a quick update.
I guess Santa Claus was successful or Christmas, so I just want to report.
With a new vehicle.
With a new vehicle.
Yes.
Yeah, he didn't slide off the road, so it was a success. Um, we will have, uh, details at the end of year and as well as our monthly, uh, run volumes for your next, next report. So if you guys have any questions for me.
We appreciate you being here and, um, representing the department for us. And I do understand, I heard that, um, Deputy Chief Rogers is re- retiring at the end of the?
Yes, he is. He decided that he'd like sunnier pastures, so he's, uh, gonna enjoy some more time off.
Okay.
He will be leaving our organization.
So do you, I, I know it's, I just, at least from my standpoint, I just saw that within the last week. Um, is there any set schedule yet on opening up for, for applications and interviews at this point?
Working through that process. It kind of came to a shock to us. So we're, we're still trying to gather that.
Okay.
But we wish him well. So we're very excited for him.
Yeah, he's, he's been a great asset.
Yes, very much so.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, Liberty Lake Sewer Water District, Bill, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor and city council. Um, so the leaf drop-off program is closed. Probably not as successful as it could have been if the snow hadn't got to us in the cold weather and everybody didn't get their leaves picked up. But we, we extended it a month, so everybody had an opportunity to clean up their yards and get the leaves over there. Um, let's see, we're, uh, there's gonna be some discussion about buffer zones between our plant and development. Um, I think there's some meetings scheduled with your city staff and we're gonna work through that. Um, it's, it's a sewage treatment plant, you know, and there's gonna be problems and we're gonna have to deal with the problems. So the plat- part of this process needs to kind of think about that. There's really no laws that say that you have to have a buffer zone. So it's gonna fall on us to figure out how to deal with these people that are gonna buy these houses across the street from a treatment plant. So more to be said about that. Uh, we have a new rate increase. Um, um, there's, there's several things on the, uh, schedule. If you go to our website, um, they're all listed there in a kind of a, a very nice, um, presentation on the rates. Um, that's about all. Um, other than the hub thing is not just for kids. So, uh, seniors spend a lot of time over there playing pickleball. So if you've never done that, you you should take that opportunity because it's really a pretty fine, uh, um, organization. I really appreciate his, uh, presentation. That was well done. Questions?
Great, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Uh, just a, a question on, uh, can you speak just a little bit to your maybe your process and who's the decision makers on the rate increases? Or anybody that will be listening, maybe not tonight, but future.
Yeah, well, um, us, there's three commissioners and, uh, so they make the presentation to us. Bajie is our manager and he has a staff and they put together the, uh, what we need to operate the plant. The problem with our system was there was a period of time or like twelve or fifteen years when they never raised the rates. It just didn't. Um, and you, those were missed opportunities, you know, so you could have raised a percent or two percent or fifty cents over those years and we wouldn't be in this situation we're in now. So we have, um, the water rate didn't go up very much. The sewer rate went up five bucks. But the reason for that is, you know, we're, we have a lot of debt on that plant because we had to put the new tertiary system in. That's very expensive. So, um, it, it, it put us in a bind that we didn't particularly want to be in, but that's where we're at. So, and there's other rates. There's rates for hookups and connections and inspections and other things. But those are the two items that most of the citizens of Liberty Lake are gonna deal with. It's not a lot, but it's, you know, every dollar, uh, is, is, uh, you know, affects the families, so. But we have to do that or we, you know, we get home.
Perfect. Thank you for the answer.
Good.
Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, sure, just to kind of quick, quick clarify, there isn't, for example, a state commission that you put a rate suggest or request into to confirm. It's really the discretion of the commissioners where that is.
Correct.
Councilmember Solberg.
Bill, I appreciate you're giving us the heads up on the buffer zone issues. And perhaps since we both have about the same amount of gray hair, you remember when Spokane County ended up buying a bunch of homes up in the Mead area when they composted and almost exactly the same issues came up there where there were no definable, um, ordinances or rules or regulations. So I look forward to us getting ahead of that because the municipality or the entity that, uh, is, this is contained will can be responsible in court.
We're, we're already getting emails.
Okay.
Already, yeah. So that was the city of Spokane. We, we went in with Scott fertilizer to do this. You know, mulching deal. Boy, did that turn out to be a mess.
Yeah.
And so many, many of those houses over in Colbert, we had to buy.
Yes.
We just couldn't mitigate the problem. It was, is what it was.
Yeah. So.
Thanks for being proactive.
Sure.
Thanks, thanks for bringing. Alright, appreciate it. Okay, next we're up to our workshop discussion that we changed to, um, STA Advisory Board Appointment. Um, and I will note that, uh, Mayor Chris Grover from, um, Sheeney is on with us as well. I'm just gonna go, I'm gonna start off by just reading the letter from, from Spokane Transit to get everybody kind of up to speed. In accordance with existing STA bylaws, Article Two, Section Two One A, the smaller cities within the boundaries of the public transportation benefit area, PTBA rotate the appointments of their one STA board voting member every two years. The appointment rotation for the city of Liberty Lake is from January twenty, January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The city of Liberty Lake needs to appoint an elected official to serve on the STA Board of Directors for a one-year term beginning January 1, 2023. Current Liberty Lake appointee is Councilmember Dan Dunn, an alternate member who will, who will attend STA board meetings if or when the when, if or when the Liberty Lake appointee is unable to attend should also be appointed. So it talks about the amount of time for board meetings and committee meetings. So I know, I believe Dan also spoke with, with Mayor Grover and so did I. Um, he was the most recent voting member for the small cities. And we also have an opportunity in the past when we have had our representation on the STA board and we haven't been the voting member. We usually have another council, council member be the, be the backup. It's been suggested by Mayor Grover, which I tend to agree with, that we do have the ability to appoint him as the backup, having already been a voting member and been involved. Instead of one of us who would rarely go to an STA meeting, then all of a sudden having to go and make, make a vote on something we don't have any background on. So I talked to Councilmember Dunn. He's interested in remaining the represent representative and this year being a voting member. Mayor Grover, um, Todd, can you unmute him? I didn't know if you might have anything to add.
No, thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity. I, I, I've been on the board since 19, or I'm sorry, 2018. Not that long. And I, I have full confidence in Councilmember Dunn's ability to represent not only Liberty Lake, but Millwood, Airway Heights, Millwood, or Medical Lake and Cheney. But I'm happy to, to fill in when he can't make the board meetings. Um, I've got a passion for transit, so I would appreciate it. If you so choose that I could be Mr. Dunn's alternate on the STA board.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, I'll echo, uh, Mayor Grover's participation in STA and specifically contributions to discussion have been an example. So, um, yeah, I'm grateful to be able to recognize Grover as a backup that I would go on and as the voting member in this change for the next term.
So obviously I can open up for other nominations if anybody else is interested, but I, I think since Stan's been involved, um, it makes a lot of sense and he's willing to make the commitment for the next year. So if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to appoint Councilmember Dunn as the STA representative for Liberty Lake.
So moved.
Motion by, I'm trying to find my right column here. Motion by Councilmember Salberg. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kurtz. All right. Any further discussion?
Susan Myers on, um.
Oh, Susan, I didn't see you. Do you have anything you want to add before I go to a vote?
No ma'am, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. I've got my screen all jumbled. My apologies. So we've got a first and a second. Any other discussion? All right, do we have, I guess, all in favor of appointing Councilmember Dunn as the STA appoint, appointed official? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. And then we might, would entertain a motion to appoint Mayor Chris Grover of Cheney to be the backup for Councilmember Dunn. Should he not be able to make it? We have a motion?
Move to appoint Chris Grover as alternate.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Dunn and a second by Councilmember Spencer. Any, any discussion? Comments?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there anything in our policies that says we can't do that?
It's, it's governed with, well, Susan, this is probably a good, good spot for you to jump in.
It's, yes, and what was the question?
Is there anything saying that we can't appoint, um, Mayor, Mayor Grover as the alternate?
Councilmember, right?
No, and it has happened before. So the small cities represent one another, even though there are seats for all of them. One of the five is voting per state statute. And so last two years, Mayor Grover served for Airway Heights and Airway Heights Deputy Mayor Veronica Messing served for Cheney. There have been occasions where there has been a representative from a board appointment from one jurisdiction and an alternate from another. So the STA bylaws are silent on alternates for small cities on the board. And that means to me it's in, can be interpreted as allowable.
Perfect.
So, yes, happy to answer that.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing none. Do we have, um, we are, have our motion second. All those in favor of appointing Mayor Chris Grover from Cheney to be the alternate for Councilmember Dunn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Thanks, everybody. Um, and thanks for being here, Susan and Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, general business, Mayor Proten.
All right, thank you. Uh, general business item 10, I'll just make a motion to approve the consent agenda item consisting of December 20th, 22 meeting minutes. Consisting of the December 20th manual check and the amount of $3,525.75 to December 28th, 2022 vouchers and the amount of 880,106.14 and January 3rd vouchers in the amount of 740,694.56.
Say mouthful. We have a second from Councilmember Salberg. All right, do we have any questions? Not hearing any. All in favor of approving consent agenda items A and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
General Business Item 11A, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the mutual consent to extend crack ceiling contract by one year through December 31st, 23 with Road Products Incorporated not to exceed $34,999.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Spencer. Any questions? This is similar to the items we had at the last meeting extending those annual contracts as well. Anybody? All right, and first from Mayor Proten, the second by Councilmember Spencer, all in favor of approving general business action item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes six zero.
General Business Item 11B, make a motion to approve the purchase of two police vehicles off the state contract and the quote from Raycom to outfit both vehicles for a total amount of $139,631.86.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Salberg. All right, any questions? I have a chief and lieutenant are here to answer any questions you might have. Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Chief, I was just, uh, for the, for the public's, um, information. We ju, we just did this like, I guess it was November, October, wherever it was. So is this on the? What am I trying to say here? Is this on a rotation that you're trying to get the two new vehicles put forward or is this because they're available via the stat, the state contract?
Uh, both, a combination of both. So these two vehicles will replace our two higher, two of our higher mileage vehicles, which are currently over 100,000 miles.
And then the ones that we did in, do you remember when it was? It was five in, in October.
I think it was to make the order.
So that's different from this.
Yeah. So we, we actually purchased seven total, right, last year.
Right.
That included two detective vehicles. So the detective vehicles weren't part of the actual patrol rotation. This again will replace our two of our higher mileage vehicles, which are over 100,000 miles. One of the things that we're starting to see with, especially with the Fords is the water pumps. It is a guarantee the water pumps is going to fail. It's going to go out. Um, it's happening in every one of those at about what, 80,000 or so? 90,000? Yeah. So just right around there, the water pump's going. I mean, like I said, it's a guarantee. Right now Dodge has the only, um, uh, orders that are open right now for law enforcement. I did not see Ford at all last year on the state bid open. This window for Dodge will close soon. It was opened in October. And on the state bid website, it's telling you to get those in because it's such, it's, they're going to close that window shortly and it probably won't open again.
And how many vehicles do we have total?
Please, you remember?
Okay. Can I, I can jump in on this real quick?
Yes, sir. To follow up on where you're going with that. So the seven from last year or from last year's budget and they were additions to what we currently have. These two are to replace old inventory.
And we still have several vehicles that are reaching that, that critical point where they're approaching 100,000 miles. So we're, we're doing pretty good with our rotation right now, but there's still that shortage. So, um, we're trying to get ahead and, and get these in because if we, if we wait now, um, we might be hard pressed to find vehicles to purchase this year.
I, I didn't, um, look for this before. What, what lead time are they quoting? I'm just curious.
I, they didn't give one.
Of course.
They didn't give one. I, I, I would guess six months and probably another two or three to outfit these. So we'll probably see these in the fall.
Yeah.
If we get them in, uh, late spring, summertime.
And then, and the Dodges are getting good reviews.
They are. One of the things that I've noticed about our Dodges that we purchased, no issues with them. The Fords within three to 5,000 miles, we have them in for something. So, uh, we've had good luck with them. Um, other agencies that have had good luck with them. Again, we've done our research, we've reached out and spoke with not only Raycom who equips those, but other agencies who use them. And they've, they've gotten good reviews. And again, the, the vehicles, at least the, the passenger vehicles that we've purchased, we've had really good, good luck with those. They run great. They're fast. It, it's actually a little bit cheaper to equip those than Ford. So.
Keeps our community guessing. They never know what kind of car to look for. Go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
Um, and, and just to clarify, uh, this, the, this expenditure is, uh, part of what was already budgeted?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, no other questions? Well, go ahead and take a vote. Those in favor of approving the purchase of the two police vehicles in general business action items B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all motion passes six zero. Thanks, Chief. All right, we are up to council comments. You know, we had council reports before. Is there anything anybody wants to add? Comment section. All right, no public hearings or appeals, no resolutions. We are up to second read on ordinance for the compost procurement policy. And Sean is on as well. Go ahead, Kelsey.
Ordinance number 293, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a compost procurement policy subject to RCW 4319A120, requiring consideration of whether compost products can be used for government funded projects.
Thank you. Um, do we want to go ahead and, well, I guess we can take a motion and then have the discussion.
Uh, move ordinance number 293.
All right, we have a first, we have a second.
I'll see.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Salberg. I know there were lots of questions on this, um, at the last meeting in 2022. I know Mark and Sean have gotten back together with some additional information. So I'll turn that over to you two.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, so in the agenda package, we provided a handful of links to, to different sources that uh, talk specifically about, um, the ordinance itself, uh, what its purpose is, uh, and which cities, uh, should comply. And so in all of those, uh, the consensus is that the clause that is written each city 25,000 and over and each city that operates, uh, solid waste, or organic solid waste pickup, uh, needs to comply and pass an ordinance, a compost procurement ordinance, um, according to, uh, RCW. Or, or to implement RCW 70A. It is, is the most logical interpretation. It's the interpretation that all of these agencies are recommending. Um, and so that, that would be our recommendation again, uh, is for council to uh, adopt the compost procurement ordinance as it sits in front of you this evening. Sean, anything to add to that?
No, and I, and I recognize it's, that's the statute, which i, is in question is the requirement for passage, which is RCW 4319A subsection 150. May not be really clear, but I think the interpretation, if you read subsection one before you get to A and B, the intent is that all jurisdictions that are either 25,000 or that have a program under the organic material collection policy are required to do this. Uh, as Mark mentioned, all of the various agencies, ecology, AWC, MRSC are all taking the same position. Is there an enforcement mechanism in the statutory scheme? No. Uh, what does that mean? That's unknown at this point. I would suspect at some point something will occur. The legislature will do something. But I think in talking with Mark and his conversations with the various individuals at ecology and, and the like, um, as well as I think probably the most important thing, what does this mean for staff? What does this mean for the requirements? I think Mark's indicated in our conversations that it would be very minimal. In regards to the reporting requirements and/or what's required under the statutes. So I think from taking those things all into considerations, it's, doesn't appear that it would be an issue by approving an ordinance consistent with what uh, 4319A150 requires.
And, and if I can follow up just one minute on that, the, the unfunded mandate portion of this, which uh, rears its head on the reporting requirements individually for this in particular uh, requirement, there, there's not an overwhelming administrative burden. It's fairly light. The, the issue comes in on the cumulative impact of all of the unfunded mandates, which this is one of them, right? And so I don't want to overlook that. Um, but the, the requirements of this particular uh, requirement on the administrative staff is, is fairly small individually.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, not seeing or hearing any. All in favor, oops.
Mayor.
Yeah, comments, I got it.
Thank you.
Are there any? Well, we don't have any public, um, sitting here in chambers, but if there's your employees sitting there, you're not the public. You can't do that. If we, if we have anybody online who wants to make a citizen comment on this ordinance number 293, please go ahead and send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting host in the chat function and you'll have three minutes. Let me give you a moment or two to get that chat in. Anything, Todd? No, okay. So you don't have any citizen comments? So we'll go ahead and take a vote. So those in favor of approving ordinance 293, please say aye. Okay, hold on, hold those there so I can, because just keep your hands up. I, we got. Oh, boy. All right, and those opposed? All right, so just for clarification, Sean, so the vote is three, three. Um, I can't break a tie in an ordinance.
Correct.
So it, so it fails?
Correct.
So what are the implications of that with regards to this requirement?
Well, it's like I said, I don't think there's anything in the statute at this point that, um, says anything relative to not passing it, other than it's, the statute says it shall be passed. Um, I think that's something that would have to be further investigated at this point. I mean, Mark, I don't, Mark, I don't know if any of your conversations with ecology or others indicated what it would mean if you didn't pass, if an ordinance wasn't passed.
No.
Did you have any of those conversations?
I, I don't think that's known at this point. There, there's no specific answer to that question at this point. No.
Yeah. That's my understanding as well.
Just want to make sure. That's something that I can follow up on with Valley Chamber and a couple of those different entities as well. See what they're hearing. All right, thank you.
Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a statement. Uh, we just conducted a vote as a city council to not comply with the RC Dodge use of the state of Washington.
Correct. Which really technically is a violation of.
A direct violation of state law.
Yeah.
I'm disappointed.
Okay, um, where am I? Emergency ordinances, we don't have any introduction of upcoming agenda items. So get our matrix out here. So for, um, and Mayor Proten, I apologize. I had a note to call you on this, um, last, last week. We had tossed around the idea in our agenda review of putting the library ordinance workshop at the six o'clock on the 17th. Is that, is that good timing?
Let's see, why not?
Are you, is there anybody opposed to doing that six o'clock on the 17th? All right, so I guess we've got that. And then the other workshops we have on the 17th are the financial policy updates. Kyle, you still on track for that?
Yes.
Okay. Code of Ethics Social Media, we'll be going through the, the current, um, current council code and discussing that. And then um, kind of an update on utility tax rebate program, local sales tax option. Kyle and Kyle and I have kind of uncovered another possible option of a replace, possible replacement for utility tax. So this is, um, most likely something you all would probably want to put to the voters, but we want to get it out in front of you. Um, and also a good. And also a good thing with, once we determine what plat, you know, if we're going to approve the platform for our public engagement, another good thing for that. So those are the three workshops we have for the seventeenth. Is there anything else on the TBD list that somebody might want to move up or add for future? But Councilmember Dunn and then Councilmember Spencer.
Did we put this Zen City thing in yourself?
Oh, we're, we're going to look at that, so. I don't have my calendar. Let me get my calendar up here. Sorry about this. Come on, calendar would be good. There we go. So the first meeting in February is the seventh. And I would, I would propose to put it at the six o'clock, so we have a, so we have a continual hour instead of putting an hour long discussion on one topic in the middle of the meeting. Is everybody okay with that?
Should I say that one more time?
On February seventh at the six P M workshop.
Yes.
Okay, sounds like we've got consensus on that. And then we still have. Hopefully soon, I know, Lisa, are you still on? Are we still looking at possibly having some information back on the design cost on poles and netting? That update in February? Or are we looking at the second meeting in February?
Potentially, yeah. I, I believe the first meeting, we may have it as early as the second meeting in January. I just don't know at this point.
Okay.
We'll bring it, we'll get it back to you and get it on the agenda as quickly as we can, so we can keep the process moving.
Perfect, and I don't think that will.
Thank you.
All right, and we've got some other things on here. We will work out the strategic plan with the doodle pole and.
Mayor, quick question.
Yes.
For the January seventeenth, in regards to the hub conversation we had earlier, is that in need of being a workshop discussion since we're going to talk about several different scenarios from Kyle or?
We can come up with the action item wording so that we can have the discussion first and then a motion fill in the blank.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
That way we keep the conversation all in one part of the meeting. All right, anybody else? Good. All right, so moving on, citizen comments. We are back to citizen comments. If anybody online would make, like to make up to a three minute comment on any topic, please send Todd Henderson, our meeting host, a note in chat and he will let me know. Doesn't sound like we have anybody. All right, we have no executive session and unless anybody has any objections, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, Mark, you still moved, is that, sure.
All right, no objections. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Happy New Year.
Thank you.